Good evening and welcome to the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Yukon Planning Commission Meeting. If everybody will please rise for the invocation, then we'll salute the flag. Commissioner Rice?
Father, we want to thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for the amazing rain and thank you for your grace and mercy every morning. We ask of you be with us, give us wisdom, and we thank you and praise you in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Chairman Wright?
Here.
Vice Chairman Geis?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Knuckles?
Item number one on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the September fifteenth meeting. Have you gentlemen had the opportunity to take a look at those?
Yes.
Yes, our motion to approve?
My second.
Call the vote, please.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles? Jones? Clark?
Yes.
Item number two, is there any visitors in the audience today that are here to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing that there's no visitors, we'll move on to item number three to hear a request from N I Stevens Insurance Agency Incorporated for a special use permit at two-one-two-one South Yukon Parkway, Suite one-twenty. Is there anybody here to speak on that today? Please state your name and your address for the record when you each speak, if you don't mind, so, but go ahead.
Hi, I'm Anna E. Stevens.
Okay, wait a minute, what, how do you say your name?
Anna E.
Anna E., okay. Sorry, I butchered that. Go ahead.
You said my address?
Uh-huh.
Twenty-one twenty-one, South Yukon Parkway, Suite one-twenty.
Okay.
And I am Amy Coleman. I am Agency Field Leadership for State Farm, and I live in Elgin. My address is ninety-one twenty-six, State Highway seventeen, Elgin, Oklahoma, seven-three-five-three-eight.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm here to request approval for the special use permit to open up my State Farm agency.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Gentlemen, do you guys have any questions?
I do not.
It's pretty cut and dry. It's a commercial space. Mr. Nail approves of it. I guess we wouldn't be doing this if he didn't.
You're just taking occupancy at one of the units there already, so...
It's just our code requires a special use permit on certain uses on some different of the zonings, and that was some of the changes we made last year is why they're having to do this, so... Okay, we don't have any other, anybody in the, in the audience today that's here to speak on this? Okay, thank you, ladies. In the case of the special use permit application for an office business professional by, I still am not going to say it right, N I Stevens Insurance Agency, and we are afraid we have read the staff report and received testimony. At the public hearing, we find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval.
My second.
Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Good luck with your, uh, your business. Moving on to item number four, to hear requests by Yemen L., Yemen Lee, Libby Ross with Co- Host Oklahoma for a special use permit at thirteen-zero-four Caitlin Court. Is there anybody here to speak on that today? Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, my name is Libby Ross, and I'm the owner of Co-Host Oklahoma. I live at eighty-five-hundred Vinnie Bruce in Norman, Oklahoma, and Mr. Lee has hired me to represent his short-term rental. We represent about fifty short-term rentals across the state currently, and we would like to bring this one to Yukon.
Where does Mr. Lee reside?
Edmund.
Would he be the property manager, or would it be somebody like, he hires your company to do it?
Me, yeah, yeah, I would represent him through the guest messaging, HOA representation, stuff like that.
So Danielle, there's a lot of recommendations, you know, just to kind of go in line with what the recommend, you know, what the requirements are. Is the application not complete? We're missing some holes? Thank you, ma'am.
No, the application is complete. We have everything we need. Those recommendations are in there, just if there's anything, letting you know that there's other things that could be requested of, of, of the applicant, but we have received everything at this point that we need for the, for the application, and then should it be approved, it would go before the city council this month as well.
And so all these recommendations, and you're, you're aware of those recommendations that they're, that they're stating if we were to pass this?
Um, I believe so. I mean, we've had a lot of correspondence via email, and the packet was pretty thick to get to you guys.
Imagine that.
And you guys like to party late here in Yukon.
I won't comment on that, but, uh, I did graduate from here, but, um, but yeah, so, okay, okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience here to, to speak on this? Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll go one at a time. Thank you, ma'am.
Can we go together?
Absolutely, sure.
Hello, my name's Alyssa Acosta. My address is fourteen-hundred Caitlin Court in Yukon.
And I'm Deborah Cook, and I live at thirteen-twenty Caitlin Court.
We are here today to formally oppose the permit. We, it specifically is prohibited in our bylaws, which I have a copy to leave with you guys. We have a petition from every homeowner that is signed, that is opposing, that's everyone in our community who's opposed. So I can leave this copy with you. There's a formal letter, there's a petition, and then there's the actual bylaws.
And I'd like to speak on it. I've been there since Legacy Lake was developed, I helped develop the neighborhood. We have nineteen lots in Legacy Lakes. We are one street with one entry, but we are a gated community. Start out mainly, we live on a small lake, we have small yards, we have one street, two-car garages with minimal parking on our streets. We have a few children in there, not many, most of them are the ones we have are adults, and we can barely park our cars as it is. We are very private, we know each other in there, and we don't have commercial businesses going in on our, our subdivision, we don't allow garage sales there. We just watch over each other, and there's a reason for that. I myself have a disabled brother that walks at night, he's a disabled vet, he lives with me. We don't need people coming and going. If you want to lease your home because you own it, that's fine, but to have Airbnbs, I stay in them when I travel. I'm a realtor, I mean, I know that, and it's, it's a great business for some people, but it's not meant for Legacy Lakes. Jim Niles developed this, I helped him develop it, we know what it's about, and it's just one of those things that we can't have in our small community. Every home in there was custom designed, custom built, I custom designed mine with Steve. It's my forever home. We just need the safety, safetiness of it. I'm a single person that lives there, other people that there, we've added certain stuff, we just don't need it in our community.
And I, I am one of the ones that do have a child, and that's half the reason I moved there is because there was like eight people living in there currently with the gated community, and so I don't want people having access late at night and no telling what all that will bring, what traffic that brings, what type of people, how it can compromise the integrity of our neighborhood, so...
We've never even allowed spec builders in there. I mean, we bring in, we have to approve the builders that come in there, that's the reason we still have three vacant lots. We've been very particular, and then to say, okay, we're going to allow Airbnb and anyone can come in that gate? No. Everyone has a code and they have an opener, and it's just...
Did you say you do not allow garage sales in there?
No, we don't. And we don't allow anyone to just have access to the gate, and it stays in our bylaws, no commercial business.
This is like an HOA bylaws?
Yes, it is. And you can have a copy.
And has staff seen this?
No. We've never met the person. We have multiple HOA meetings, we've put it in their mailbox, no one's ever attended an HOA meeting, no one's ever brought this to our attention as a HOA. I'm the vice president, my husband's the president, we've never met this person.
And we didn't even know the home was for sale until the gentleman who owned it originally, when he had a custom build. I heard from the gentleman after he bought it that he had bought the home, and he called me and told me he had purchased it, and he asked about the HOA dues, and I said, okay, yeah, you send them to me, and this is my address, and I said, when are you moving in? And he said, well, I won't be moving in, I don't think. He said, I did purchase the house, and I said, what are your plans? Are you going to resell it? And he says, no, but can I lease it out? And I said, well, if you own a home and you're not going to live in it right away. I said, certainly, anyone who owns a home can lease it out on a long-term lease. I mean, that's your option, no one's going to prevent you from doing that. I said, but if you have any questions, you know, feel free to call me. And I saw a guy there, and I assumed he was leasing the home, I didn't bother him, and then all of a sudden we saw a sign in the front yard that said, this was going on, that was just a few weeks ago. So, yeah, that's not...
Gotcha.
It's totally different from what we expected.
Yeah.
And I don't know if any of you have been in Legacy Lakes to actually realize how small it is. It's like...
I don't know. We know very...
Yeah, we drive by it all the time.
I don't have a gate code.
We won't give you one either.
No, I was actually surprised. I thought it was just an elderly...
It's hard to come by.
Well, it started out it was going to be for elderly, but we ended up finding young people that liked to live there, and then when David moved in, look how young he is. Yeah. Look how young I am, I mean, after all, we don't claim to be elderly.
No.
No, but, there you have it.
I tend to stick my foot in my mouth.
Yeah, don't say anything. So anyway, yeah.
Okay, thank you, ladies. I think we had a few others that were, like, a couple of other folks that want to speak on this?
I think they got, they pretty much said...
Now, ma'am, you said you had a petition?
It's in, it should be.
It's in with this too? Okay.
Yes, all of our, every homeowner's...
Almost, every homeowner's.
Yeah, except one. Well, there is one more, miss. He doesn't have a home, he has, he has a lot, he has a building, so, yeah.
So you say you're the president and the vice president of HOA is, can you rent the house out? I'm not an attorney, maybe, but it seems like you can't even rent a house out in there.
That's all it is. It's nothing that can gain any kind of financial income.
I mean, isn't that kind of what's saying at the top there, that you have to use it as your primary residence, like?
Libby, was, um, so is the owner, is he aware of these HOA? I mean, obviously, if you sell it and you buy it, you have to...
I knew there was an HOA, and he asked if I would be able to communicate with the HOA, but I not, I was under the understanding that, he was under the understanding, a lot of hearsay there, right? That, that that's, that it was allowed and that it was going to be okay. From what I understood is, was a long-term rental at one point in time, and there were some very unhappy neighbors with the long-term rental. I think that guy liked to get down, and then, then he wanted to switch it over because there was issues with the neighbors, I believe, that were first to the left when you're pulling out of the driveway, and that's when he decided to go from long-term to short-term. So I do believe it was a long-term rental prior, but that's, I'm really not privy to any of that, and that's not why I'm in.
Let's all speak, yeah, okay.
But I do believe it's changed hands since it was built, so went from one guy to the second guy.
To this, Mr. Lee?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Thank you. Danielle, just something, are you waving at me? Okay. Somebody else wanted to speak? Go ahead, sir. The young man of the, the neighborhood?
Yeah, David. Sixty-nine years young, all right? There's, uh, once the house was built...
Can you give us your name and address?
My name's David Dunn, thirteen sixteen Caitlin Court.
Thank you.
Once the house was built, uh, I never saw anybody that was ever there. Their cars would come in and out a couple of times, and then one morning I saw a sheriff's truck go by, and I got out, I walked out the front because I thought there's, there'd been some kids that had been fishing in the pond, and, you know, people worried about them being down there, and I thought maybe that's what he was coming in for. Well, when I, when I walked out my front door, there was like eight or ten guys in camouflage with long guns walking by the front of my house, and they told me to get back in my house. And they went in there and whoever the people were that owned it at the time, they went in and raided it. Uh, I've, I've heard different things, drugs, I, I stayed in my house.
As you were told.
But anyway, that's, that's the only thing I've seen of anybody from that place, and then it sat empty for months, and I didn't even know it was resold.
Right.
And now they're talking about it to a different person that's wanting to rent it out. I kind of thought the first people might want to rent it out, but, you know, the, the bylaws say that it's got to be a primary residence. Obviously, if you're Airbnb-ing it, it's not a primary residence, so, anyway, thanks, guys.
Yep, thanks, David.
Does anybody else in the corner want to speak? You know, it's always been my stance that Airbnb short-term rentals are a better solution than long-term rentals because of that problem, but I think what we're finding is, is that when we go up against HOAs, we're, it's a losing battle, so, um, we're learning, I think, at this level for us, too. But anyways, you guys have anything else?
No, I mean, I've made it no secret, that's, if there's an HOA rule on it, I just hesitate to ever go against that because it wouldn't be right to make them go to court for that, is my opinion on it, so, that's where I struggle, so...
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Is there any chance I can ask for a continuance, then, if Mr. Lee truly has some sort of proof that he felt that this was okay? If, if he doesn't, and there was no communication within the HOA or within anything that went on prior, then, then we wash it and we don't come back, but if there is some sort of value in that, I mean, that, that's all I would ask.
So we could, we could even deny it tonight, and it would still go in front of the city council?
Okay.
And at that point, you could bring up any new information you might have to the city council, and that would be, you know, taken care of at that point.
Okay.
Because to this point, at the end of the day, we're an advisory board.
And you guys could have a...
Okay.
A chance to speak again as well, and...
When we have the meetings, all of our minutes, this is never abroad, so even if someone individually told them that this was okay, it was never abroad, and we have meetings for that.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the, in the audience want, uh, any, to comment any further? Guys want to make a motion?
Yeah. In the case of the special request for a special use permit for short-term rental at thirteen oh-four Caitlin Court, I recommend denial.
My second. Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Uh, yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Yes, to think about. Good luck with, to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would, uh, would you bring the sign-in sheet? Okay. Item number four, to hear requests by...
Don't wait now.
Nope, we're item number five. Item number five, to hear requests by Terrence L. Haynes, SMC Consulting Engineers on behalf of Ten West Center LLC for a curb cut slash driveway relocation at eleven-two-hundred Northwest Tenth Street. Is there anybody here to speak on that today? Yes, sir, Mr. Box?
Good evening, David Box, five twenty-five Northwest Eleventh Street. With me this evening, we've got a representative from the developer, we have our civil engineer as well as our traffic engineer, so our hope is we have everyone possible that might be needed to answer any question. So this is a bit of an interesting application in that what we're requesting are four driveway cuts. There are already four driveway cuts there, as your staff report indicates, there are three of which that significantly violate your rules for separation. This has been a project that we've been working with your staff for quite some time, we want to thank them for all their help and assistance. We've performed traffic studies on this, we have revised it in a manner to make sure that everything that we're bringing forward to you today is fully compliant with, with all of the rules that you have. What you see in your staff report is that not only do we meet all the separation requirements from intersections and freeways, but also on an individual basis, all of the separation requirements are met. I believe your code states a hundred feet between, and I believe at minimum, we are three-hundred-and-fifty-five feet between. So, uh, it's a, it's a piece of property that I have an interesting history on, I've been involved in it for about ten years. When a previous developer came through, we had a, a case that was denied by the City of Oklahoma City. At the time, there was great concern because we had a large element of multifamily as part of it. We lost that case, we filed a lawsuit in Oklahoma County District Court, ultimately we're successful in that overturning the Oklahoma City City Council's decision. So right now, it is a approved project with significant amount of multifamily. What my client seeks to do is remove all the multifamily and just do a commercial use. So part of that process is, of course, we need driveway permits from the City of Yukon, so we spent a whole bunch of time working with your staff, working with the engineers to make sure that whatever we have is fully compliant with all of your regulations, and that's what we are here for this evening, are for driveway cuts that are fully compliant, and we are happy to answer any questions.
I have a question that may be for Mr. Reinhardt and for staff. They have four curb cuts, what if we only wanted to approve two? Could we, do we have that kind of say, if you will?
How's Roger and I look at each other across the room?
You would have that ability. This is going, going to be going before you guys and Traffic Commission tomorrow evening, and then it'll go to City Council as well. So obviously, you guys are the advisory board to City Council, so you guys can make that as a recommendation, and I can certainly pass that along to the Traffic Commission as well, and then I'll let Roger finish it up if there's anything I missed.
So I think, I, maybe Mr. Box, you can clarify this, but I think this application itself is only for two of those four, right? That was what was in the transmittal letter from the original application.
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
So it's, it's a bit, I, I don't know, I mean, that, that was a question that frankly I had as well. Item seven in the staff report does say the proposed curb cuts are two of the four total entrances to the site. I mean, our, our goal would be to, to have four, if, if there's a concern with four, perhaps three, with, you know, driveway number three is limited to a, a ride-in, ride-out. So our, our hope is that we have four, if there's a concern with four, then, then it would be three with that caveat that driveway number three is a ride-in, ride-out. We think, given the lineal footage that we have, which is about eighteen-hundred lineal feet, two drives would be pretty limited, and perhaps create more problems as it relates to circulation and traffic than having a one additional ride-in, ride-out. Is your client going to pay for the signal light?
Yeah, so that, that's a conversation we're going to have with staff. I don't know that we can answer that today, what we commit to is work with staff so that we have a mutually beneficial resolution to all of the, the costs associated with the traffic improvements.
Has there been discussion with staff and your client in, like, to make sure I say this right, deceleration and acceleration lanes that could possibly be built into their property where, you know, maybe, let's just say that we keep, and this is me talking out loud, let's say we keep the number three entrance, where you take some of your property and cut it out, and we keep our two lanes, but then if, if folks wanted to get over to get into your property, then they would have their, like a, is that making sense, like a deceleration lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you would permit me, I'm going to let the smart people in the room, the engineers, answer that question.
Thank you, David. I'm Terrence Haynes, eight fifteen West Main, Oklahoma City. I'm the one that made the application, and, and the original letter that was submitted to the city, because there was already existing driveways, including right across the street from Bryce Court, full-access driveway, there's other, there's three others out there. We recognize, well, we already have two that's already there, and one that's a little to the west.
Yeah.
It is a smaller driveway and needs to be modified in order to allow for, that's the one third driveway that David just mentioned, has a ride-in, ride-out. Bryce Court, which is where the traffic signal would be, and then the further east on the northeast corner, a full-access driveway, and then the fourth one is another ride-in, ride-out in between Bryce Court and the northeast driveway. So those are the four, there were already two, basically putting, putting them right there, right back where they are, just modifying one of them to the west to a ride-in, ride-out. As far as, to answer your question, Commissioner, the, we did a complete study to show that we do need to widen all of Tenth Street, the longest runage. That will allow for that right-turn lane as you're going eastbound. It will allow for left-turn movements as you're going westbound in the center, in the center lane. The signal is important because that's where you would have your stacking in both east and west directions, turning in and out of this development, as well as from the residential neighborhood to the north off of Bryce Court. So the study shows the entire section along Tenth Street from the interstate on-off ramp to the east of the property would be widened to, to five lanes. That would accommodate your, your acceleration and deceleration lanes.
How far, how far to the east will that go, Terrence?
BJ, how far to the east did you recommend? Right, but how, but, but if we go east, we, then it tapers back down to the four-lane section that you have out there.
They probably get it from the church.
So it's about six hundred, about six, I think it was around six hundred feet or so.
... by the westbound left turn at that far east drive.
Correct.
So it'll continue on, so there'll be enough human or vehicles to turn left into there and get out of the...
Into the church, and, and, will it go, will it continue down to both the churches that are across the street from each other?
I don't think that's what they're saying, though. I think they're gonna, you're saying that you're gonna, you're gonna widen the road in front of your property, basically.
Yes, and then it would taper back.
Which is the commercial area of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think there's any argument that you guys have made some really good decisions on this. What we're challenged to do is, is to keep traffic at a minimum. You know, just west of this is the, the Czech, Czech Hall Plaza, you know, I call it the Academy Complex, if you will. There's two entrances in there, and the traffic's not too bad. When we get over to Garth Brooks, it tends to be a nightmare because of all the veins going in. This is my neighborhood, if you will, so this is very important to me because I live like right here, but, uh, when we ask these questions, like, that's all we're concerned about is traffic.
And that's why we, that's why we spent the time and the energy, and BJ Hawkins is our professional traffic engineer, is best in the state, best in the Midwest. He understands what traffic does and what it should do, and his approach is always conservative when it comes to traffic, and so we rely on that information.
Is he interested in moving to Yukon?
Sir?
Is he interested in moving to Yukon?
Come on over, come on over.
So with the widening, again, is that, that goes back to, uh, Mr. Box said that this would be in discussions with the city on how this is going to, you know, who's going to split the bill if not?
Yes.
It'd be nice if Oklahoma City came to the table, too, since they get all of these tax dollars, so, I don't know how that works, but anyways, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you guys have any questions for, for them before we open it up to the...
So are we, this is, per the way I'm reading it, there's only two cuts that we're, that are on the...
Correct, so this application...
It's cut two and four, driveway two and four, correct?
Yes, if you, if you look at the transmittal letter, number three, it says the curb cut and driveway application is submitted for the relocation of driveways number two and number four. The recommended lane widening, traffic signal and modification of two existing driveways will be submitted under separate cover.
So change up, for like driveway three would be a different, is going to be a different, because that has to be approved for widening and other stuff, as far as that goes.
So we're only considering two of those curb cuts?
Two and four.
Two and four.
Two and four on the far east side.
Driveway two and four, because we're just moving four driveway.
Right. Driveway three stays, four would move, and then two moves.
Yeah.
Because two's down there on the east end. Okay, if you guys are good, we can open it up. Oh, you're good?
While we're all here.
So, driveway one is where the signal is.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
So, now, it's already there. I want to make sure we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Two and four are what is proposed in addition to the other two. I want to make, are you stating that driveway one would not be approved as part of this?
So, I was under the impression when I read the letter that this application was for driveways number two and number four. I believe, and I was just speaking with Mr. Reinhardt, that all of these curb cuts that already exist could be developed on anyway. They're non-compliant with our ordinances, but they already exist. And so, the developer could reasonably go ahead and develop those into driveways as they please. But this is, we're considering number two and number four, the relocation of those two. And then one and three already exist.
So, no additional approvals needed?
Exactly.
Okay.
With two, sorry, for the record, Chris Chalice, Sooner Investment, the applicant developer. Needing my address?
Yes.
Twenty-three oh one West I forty-four Service Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. So, two is, just so that we're all clear, intersection two or cut two is the proposed signalized entrance at Bryce Canyon.
That's number one on your exhibit.
And that's there.
All right, as existing, not subject to the approval this evening.
Yes.
So, the only thing subject to approval are two and four. One and three are already approved with no additional approval necessary?
You say that loosely, they were already there.
We have to approve them in some manner.
But, but if, it is the condition that if we approve number two and four, then the original entrances will not be utilized. This is a relocation, right? So, it shows here on your map that the original number four is just to the west of entrance one?
Do you have the staff report?
Do you need?
Because that's what you're looking at, Chairman. Are you looking at the staff report or?
No, I'm looking at the site plan.
You're looking at the site plan that was attached.
To, to the west of driveway one.
You can, you guys feel free to take a bit, yeah. We'll talk to you in a second.
Yeah, so to be clear, west of driveway one.
We take that with you, sir.
Take a picture of it.
Is the existing four that is proposed to be relocated to the east.
So, if we approve this, then that one's going away?
Yes.
Okay, so relocate, I just want to make sure it means relocate, meaning doing away with the original.
And then same thing.
Dave, do you want this big map? Right here, Mr. Box, you? Seems like, yeah.
Existing driveway two is being relocated slightly to the east, which would kill the existing.
And then four's making a big jump to the east.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
What's being approved would be two and four. One and three are staying in their current location with the need to be improved in some fashion.
Modified.
Yeah, but we're in agreement that if we approve these two here, then the other two, it's just being relocated.
There'll never be more than four.
Right, that's, okay, that's clear, good.
Okay, that's certainly clear.
Okay, I think, I'm on the same page.
Yeah, I'm on that.
So, just for clarification on three and one, if there's any modification that extends, which there might be just for traffic, that would need approval. That's an additional, expanding the curb cut, right?
If we, if the road gets widened, those curves won't exist.
Right.
Anymore, so they'll, now, we're just talking about the entrance, basically, right?
Well, see, I don't know, I mean, our goal is to have four, four drives.
Yeah, right.
However, they want to be classified.
Right.
Two of which are moving with the original locations no longer existing. Two are in their existing location, but modified in a manner to be improved.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Right, and what's not being considered tonight is the widening of Tenth Street currently in its form or adding.
Right, and I think we understand that anything can change from this point forward. But in good faith, that's, that's the idea of what you're doing moving forward, and I would trust that, so, okay. Okay, you guys, yeah.
Again, Chris Chalice, Development Team, you can look at the shopping centers we've done around the state, around the city. We've looked very carefully at this. We do not intend to have multiple curb cuts for the out parcels, confident as the developments that we have in other, in other centers, we can work off of the curb cuts as proposed on the map.
What are some of those other centers that you've done, Chris?
Well, the one you can look, probably we're most known for is University Town Center in Norman. There's a big shopping center on the east side of I thirty-five at Robinson, the super target in Crest. About two hundred acres, two million square feet of retail. Counterpart, east side of the Compass, if you will, Midwest City, across from Tinker Air Force Base, Town Center Plaza, eight hundred thousand square feet, Target and Lowe's Anchor Shopping Center, everyone's probably familiar with that one. Second and Bryan Edmund is another one, another target at Lowe's Anchor Development.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate, I apologize for the nomenclature, the labeling. We'll get that cleaned up.
I'll be honest with you, I felt like this was very clear, so.
All right, great, well, thank you all.
This was great, I'm a site plan guy, and this really may help me understand, so, thank you.
I'm available to answer any questions that any of the community has.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. We good, we're gonna open it up to the citizens. So, first up, now, we're gonna open it up for discussion from the folks in the audience. So, we've got Alyssa and Jason Alosta, you guys still here? Okay, Deborah Cook, they already left, okay, Jeff Wilson.
Hello, my name is Jeff Wilson, I live at three oh four East Olympic Drive. So, I'm here tonight, kind of learn, just to learn some information about this subdivision, this project going in across the street. I'm concerned because my house, I'm two houses to the east of Bryce Canyon there. And of course, when I bought the place a couple of years ago, I knew something was gonna develop, that's a huge chunk of land there. I know there's gotta be a traffic light right there, I'm gonna have cars backed up behind my house. That's a bummer, but it's gonna happen, I know it, something's gonna happen someday there.
Sure.
I just, you know, I'm bummed out, it's like I don't hear the loud Harleys gunning it and the rap music going, and it's just part of life. Anyhow, now that I'm kind of looking at this plan here that I have, it makes a little more sense here. I know there is four curb cuts over there, little tiny existing ones. So, you're wanting to utilize the existing one on the far west end of the property that's already there. Come up here and take a peek, yeah, yeah. This existing one right here.
It's a ride-in, ride-out.
Yeah, that'd be a ride-in, ride-out, this would be the main one right here. My place is here.
Yes, sir.
And then there's these two curb cuts down here.
Ride-in, ride-out.
And be a ride-in, ride-out here, and then another traffic light here.
Not a traffic light.
Not a traffic light, but in, in, in all the ways. And then you're talking about bringing the property over to the south side to widen this up to where there's lanes to come in to get in and out of here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my next question is, I'm concerned about noise lighting. I, I'm kind of curious, I used to work for the City of Norman, nine years in the Planning Department. So, I want to know what, what, what's the changes gonna be made up in Oklahoma City where they're going from this PUD, this Plan Unit Development, from the fifteen oh three to the twenty-one whatever? Is there changes being made in that zoning there?
Let me, let me, let me try to answer the question as a layman rather than as a lawyer. The, this portion of the development in the current PUD is currently designated for multifamily, quite a bit of multifamily. And then there were some commercial use looks, actually, this portion of the property down here along the interstate looks surprising, very similar to the current plan. And some of the stuff over for the rest of the audience, over towards the west side, over towards Bryce Canyon, they envisioned some version of retail, didn't look quite like I have.
Right, right.
Something like that. The main difference is, we understand it as a guy who does this for a living and getting familiar with the history of this project, this northern quarter, northern third of the development was intended to be, is approved, permitted for, or zoned, I should say, for multifamily.
Still, right now, that's still zone multifamily. Personally, I would rather have business retail over there than multifamily, I believe. I got, also, I kind of looked and I saw that the PUD there kind of follows the guidelines of a C-three zoning. And I'm looking on that, so it looks like you're gonna have to have some kind of six-foot-tall fencing along Tenth Street?
I mean, we will, we will along.
You're good, yeah, for sure.
No, you're good. We will be required, screening will be required down here where the property immediately abuts, this residential down here.
But, but we don't count residential over here on the other side of the street?
Well, we don't abut you, we have, we have, we have a five-lane public street.
Street there, okay, okay, what's gonna be over along the street right here?
And you don't, I mean, you know, you don't see retail with.
Right, well, I was kind of curious, you know, you got the driveways coming in here, so I'm like, is this, am I gonna be looking at the back of buildings here?
No, sir, no, the, the, almost, the development pattern today is every out parcel, every Chili's that you can think of, that's street, the, the front door faces the street.
It's gonna be, so there's gonna be street parking out along here.
Well, not off of the street, no, sir, but yeah, I mean, parking oriented toward the street.
Right, 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 right. But I mean, I look out my back gate, I'm gonna see parking across over there. It's what I'm gonna look like across the street.
You'll have storefronts. Storefronts, and there could be some multifamily buildings, and not multifamily, multi-tended buildings where you have a couple of different, and you'll have landscape buffers that require.
Right, and then I know also due to the zoning, you know, that bars, restaurants and that type of stuff could be in there too. And I'm also concerned about, I sure would hate to have a fried chicken joint, Waffin' Fried Chicken over at my house every night, but we can't stop it, you know, I mean, it's.
You're lucky. You're lucky where you're at and the block you're in.
But that's basically my questions, and then what about, you know, light intrusion coming over? Do we have any zoning ordinance?
Unfortunately, it's all Oklahoma City, and that's where it doesn't, you know, we, we get to control the curb cuts because we share the city with them, but.
Oklahoma City's light can't intrude on Yukon City limits, though.
I mean, you don't love that, you don't love that ONQ sign out there, do you?
So.
No, it already reflects off my place.
That's what I mean, so, like, at the end of the day, I think that's up to Oklahoma City.
Well, I'm just kind of curious, Norman has some kind of a light intrusion ordinance.
And we do too.
So, I didn't know if there was something like that, because I'm curious about that too, the lighting. Is there gonna be big giant lighting, you know, what, Marquis way up tall on the buildings? Are the buildings gonna be, I understand, I read something where the buildings couldn't be any taller than forty-foot tall. Is that gonna be like the standard, or the building's gonna be that tall in the neighborhood?
That's not the standard, that's the height.
Are they gonna take them up that high, though, you think?
That's for, that, that's, sorry.
The microphone for everybody, that's to allow some parapet height. You know, if you think, if you're familiar with Norman, you're familiar with University Town Center, you're familiar with those retail buildings, that a portion of the frontage has a taller parapet to it. They like their entrance, and that's the height that we're.
And that's usually where the signage stuff are at.
And that's, and that's what the heights are.
Right, right, right.
But we do single-story retail and restaurants.
Sure. Single-story retail and restaurants. Man, I think you've about answered all my questions, you know, I mean.
I bet you have more later.
Yeah, we'll know something, I'm sure. I'll be, yeah, we're checking it out, so, no, I think, I think you've taken care of everything I had on my plate there. Like I said, I'm just concerned about the noise, smells, and, and lighting. So, we'll see on that, so, all right, thank you very much, guys.
He's gonna speak on the lighting, yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the lighting, since.
Thank you, sir.
The other PUD was approved, Oklahoma City has undergone some code revisions, and one of them was lighting. So, the commercial standards in lighting are much more strict than they were or are under the current PUD. So, when we come in with our new PUD, we'll have to adhere to the new heightened standards for lighting. That's right, which is the same spill over and those things.
Right, right, well, I know a lot of times they've changed it to where you've got to have more downward shields on them where they don't, they don't come out, and a lot of the LED lights, even the, even the street lights that the city puts up, they appear to me like they don't spread and illuminate out quite as far, they're more of a pinpoint.
Yeah, they don't, they have, they don't have the spotlight, so, yeah, yeah, so. It's the same with their signage, they've changed a lot of their code around that, and that'll be reflective in this as well, so.
Right, okay, well, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else, Bob Oden? Mr. Nail left, so I don't know anybody else on the list, so it's open now after, after Bob.
I'm Bob Oden, I live at one sixteen East Olympic Drive, which is the furthest east or west of, to the doctor's office. Okay, my house backs up to Tenth Street. First, first of all, I spent over a thousand dollars for a tree to block the ONQ across the street, just to block the lights coming. I wish I could do something about the noise. The traffic is terrible. I mean, if anybody's over there at five o'clock, six o'clock on Tenth Street coming off I forty, I mean, it's backed up on the I forty, every day.
Every day, I do it every day.
So, my main concern, and did anybody receive this in the mail?
We all did, we all got emailed copies of the letters from the concerned citizens, yes, sir.
She couldn't make it tonight, but she will be at the City Council tomorrow, tomorrow night, okay?
Tomorrow night's Traffic Commission, yes, yes, sir. Council's next week, right?
Yeah, it's probably the week after next.
Well, the meeting tomorrow night here.
There's a.
Which would be the.
Traffic Commission meeting tomorrow night.
So, she'll be here, and she's a lot smarter, a lot prettier.
They usually are.
And she's got a lot more hair than I do, okay? So, my main concern is that traffic is terrible. I can't, I'm retired, so I can stay in my house until cars go away. But, there's times I've got to get out, and it just bugs me, so. And I've lived here thirty-seven, thirty-eight, well, actually, I've lived here all my life, but.
So, you've seen it change.
I've, this particular house, I've been there for thirty-seven years, so.
Yeah.
It's getting crowded. And I'd like to, for, I don't mind the business, you know, over there, but I'd like to pick the businesses, I'd like to go in there.
Wouldn't we all?
Is there any major company coming into that?
And that's what's tough to tell, I mean, you know, they're developing this, they have to get all their ducks in a row, but I mean, most good developers aren't gonna start this without having some people.
The rumor is that like a Home Depot, Costco, Sam's, you know, coming in.
Well, just, just by the drawing that we have, I don't know that there's room for anything of that size.
That west end down.
Yeah.
In the corner there, there, there's a lot there that's.
Yeah. True.
I know you probably can't say anything about it, but.
Well, unfortunately, we just have very, just my new piece of input on this, and that's these curb cuts, so.
But you're the Planning Commission, right?
We are, yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is my neighborhood too, you know, so I grew up just a few doors down from you, so.
I went to school here, worked here.
Parkland, yeah, both my kids went through, but yes, sir, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob, thank you all.
Is there anybody else that want to speak?
How many parking spaces are gonna be in there?
Well, that, since it's been a minute, Chris Chalice for the applicant. The question to me was, from the audience was, how many parking spaces? That will be subject to city code based on, we aren't committed to that amount of square footage yet, so I can't tell you exactly. I think we are at four per, what's the code requirement, guys? Four per thousand, which is a pretty common retail code.
If you hit like a number, then it's kind of.
Parking ratio.
Kind of look at your schedule, and I'm like, I wonder, you know, if that parking lot's gonna hold five hundred cars or what? I just thought you might know rough top of your head.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, this is my neighborhood, I've lived in my house for twenty years, I live in Parkland one. I lived in Parkland two for fifteen years before that, so, you know, I came tonight to try to see if I could get some of this changed. But, I mean, I, I just think these guys have gone over and above what they have to do to make this right. It's clearly exceeding our code on how far of a distance it is. I don't love four entrances, but I just don't know if this is the time and place that that can be done. That maybe that's if they, they go to widen the road, then maybe we look at what it looks like, but. What do you guys think? I mean, just to kind of spitball.
I think leaving driveway four where it was at would be detrimental to, to anything conducive there. So, if we, you know, if we left the original existing when it was, so, I mean, I mean, when we're doing ride-in, ride-outs, and this is only those two that we're really looking at. I like driveway two, I like it being moved to that furthest east section, that's where I would want it out there. I mean, if you're gonna have any kind of full-access drive, driveway two would be where I'd want to put it, furthest away from any other intersection down there.
I would like to think too that final approval will be under the condition that we're gonna widen that, and that there's gonna, there has to be some money spent on this road to relieve some of the traffic. Because we all agree, I mean, people getting off I forty, it's gonna be just like MacArthur at Westgate. And that place is a nightmare at lunchtime, so, there'll have to be some work done like we're doing at Garth Brooks, you know, so.
So, real quick, another quick question, we are talking about a five-lane, five, so we'll have a left-turn lane and some in-and-out on the entrances and exits.
I think that's the plan, right?
That's way better than to the west with a four-lane road and a policeman sitting there letting in and out, so. Thank you.
There are seven recommendations, are you guys aware of these recommendations?
From the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You just saved me fifteen minutes from reading them all.
Yeah, we're good with all of them.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else?
I do not.
I do not. I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
In the case of the curb cut application by SMC Consulting Engineers, on behalf of the Tin West Center LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move this item to be recommended for approval.
I second. Call the vote, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Please don't put in a bunch of apartments. I'm taking your word for it, David.
You can't find a place where we have, guys.
Thanks, Chris.
We're not done, just like we're done. Okay, sorry, guys, I'm ready to go home, go take a nap.
We're done, you're not done.
Item number six on the agenda, is there any new business this evening, staff? Open discussion. Um, round of applause for the city stat, or this, everybody at the city for another amazing Czech festival. Uh, even the Czechs really killed it this year and did a lot of new fun things, and it was very festive, and I don't think we could ask for better weather, and so we love our Czech fest.
Great. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you guys being here.
Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is November the tenth, twenty twenty-five.